To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public participation, do we have anybody from the public that wants to address the board? Okay.
Don't forget hate eggs.
We'll have to mention that before we close out.
Well, I'm just bringing it up before I forget it.
Okay. Okay, approval of minutes, there's been a minor adjustment here to the agenda, we're going to be looking at a motion for non-public session one from July 8th, which have been sealed but not approved.
So moved?
So moved by Mrs. Moore, second by Mrs. Cardinal. Any errors or omissions?
Point of order, if it's sealed, we can't discuss it.
That's right.
There's no discussion, that's just approval.
That's right.
Right, well, if there's anything that-
We'd have to go in the non-public.
You'd have to go in the non-public. I just want to make that clear.
Is there anything that anybody sees that we should go in the non-public for these?
Is it these?
This one.
The ones that she just gave us?
Just giving to us draft.
Oh, okay.
It should be marked 3A, so if you want to put that in the corner for your-
I got my bad.
It's 3A for this packet. It says 5F because that's the previous packet in which it resided.
Now, 5F.
All set? Hearing none on call for vote, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Non-public session two from July 18th. These were, let's explain those.
I did not give the name, but this is the last one.
Right.
But I did not know if you wanted to seal the pending name or if you just-
This was the student issue.
There was some discussion and it was never actually solidified where we were going with it.
It was the high school.
Mm-hmm.
I think they're finally there.
I do too.
I think they're finally there.
Then we can, then there's no vote that's needed, thank you.
Thank you, Colonel.
Okay, minutes from August 1st, 2016, public session. So moved by Mr. Petrie, second by Mr. Frida. Any discussion on these, errors and omissions? I just love how she includes her happy birthday. You're missing a trick over there, are you? Anything?
No.
Hearing none on call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Abstained, Mrs. Cardinal. Non-public session one, August 1st. So moved by Mrs. Moore.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Petrie. Any discussion on these? Hearing none on call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained? August 1st, non-public session two. Motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mrs. Moore. I'll second it. Any discussion on these? Hearing none on call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained?
Abstained.
Okay.
Should those be sealed? I mean, there's no names, but it is easily identifiable.
Session two?
Yeah. I just think it's identifiable, but-
Oh.
That's all, there's no names, but-
I doubt it. I don't think so, do you?
In light of the non-public that we have coming up, it might not be a bad idea.
A motion to seal. Ah, three years.
Motion by Mrs. Moore to seal for three years?
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrie. Anything? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed? Quarter one.
Aye, opposed, please.
Okay. New business. Two buses to declare as surplus property.
In your packet, there is a memorandum from Lori. This is a follow-up to the discussion from August 1st. We have two buses that are beyond repair and we are looking to want to approve declaring these vehicles as surplus.
Make the motion that we declare the International 77 passenger and the GMC wheelchair bus as surplus.
Have a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cardinal, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Can I just ask a quick question? Or just throw a thought out there since we're on buses? Does the town have a, they have a town barn and stuff, do they have a town mechanic that works on town vehicles?
Yeah.
How come, wouldn't it be beneficial for both entities to let them work on our buses?
Well, from-
Do you have to have a special license to do that?
No, but I think what it was, was they used to work on our buses, but they weren't having time to do their own mechanics. And we were pushed off to the background until they could get their own done.
Oh.
Which is, I think, the movement to Dupreezy.
I mean, it could be a source of revenue for the town, but it could also probably save us a little money, because I think you, we only, there's only one place in the area that does this.
Right, Dupreezy is one.
No.
Well, where's the other one?
Down on Rochester. We went through that once before, Maverick was here.
One in Barrington, too.
Okay.
Down on, uh-
Seems like everybody in this area goes to one place, but-
Right.
Just wasn't sure if it'd be advantageous for us to look into that in the future.
Well, you should have competition, I agree with that.
Okay, just a quick thought.
Is that something you're wanting pursued?
No.
Okay, alright.
Superintendent's report, the first one.
I'm not going to read this verbatim, but basically it's been a fairly busy couple of weeks. On the first few days, I spent time meeting with SAU staff, all building, academic principals, vice principals. I've met with a few board members, I've met with some FAMI staff, I've met with community members. On August 2nd, I attended Farmington Night Out at Front Park, it was fun, we had a great time. August 3, 4, and 5, we had a team of administrators and teachers at the Commissioner's Summer Summit at UNH. Not everyone was there for all three days, but we had 15 people who participated in the three days. I was able to be there for two of the days. And it was a time for us to really kind of lay the foundation work for our improvement plans, which are also those pieces that position us to receive the focus grant monies for each of the schools. So, those are in place or in-
Process.
Process? And should be put in next week?
Due in August 26th.
Okay. And I've done walkthroughs of the three school buildings with our facilities manager. I will say that for the most part, things are looking really good in terms of opening on time and in great shape. There are a couple of things that were concerns as I walked through, and I'm going to be bringing those to you in the next couple of meetings. There's a few things I think we may need to move up on our schedule of, let's address this, so. August 10 and 11, six of the administrators worked with a consultant on our teacher evaluation system. And this was another chance for us to sit down and really kind of roll up our sleeves as an admin team and look at how it is that we're evaluating teachers, what our process is, what works, what we need to shift. And we are looking to streamline that process so that we have a tighter focus on exactly what it is that we're evaluating as opposed to trying to do the entirety of professional practice to say, here's our district goal, here's our school goal, and here's an individual goal, so we can differentiate for teachers according to what they're looking to do professionally as well. And then today, I spent the day with academic administrative leaders, working on all sorts of things for the opening of the school year. Tomorrow, I meet with those same people along with business administrator, facilities director, transportation, and technology to kind of work through our punch lists and see where things are, so make sure that we're in good shape, what's still on fire, that sort of thing.
Excellent, thank you.
Any questions, Surotham?
Yeah, I had one, I just left me. Oh, the, yeah, I knew what the question was. Alright, we, well, the school district spent a lot of time on evaluation, teacher evaluations, to formulate a process.
And we're not throwing that out, we're still using that same process. What we're doing is tightening up the focus, it's the same Danielson rubric, it's the same process, using the SLOs. The whole piece in that is not changing. What we're doing is focusing the pieces that we are going to be evaluating individual teachers. So we'll have a focus area for the district of the domains that are there, we'll have a focus area for each building. And then teachers will make the decision, if they're on just a regular plan, they'll make the decision with their administrator, here's what I want to work on, here's my professional growth goal and what makes the most sense for me. If someone's on an improvement plan, that will be directed by the administrator, here's what we need you to work on. But it gives some latitude for people to say, okay, here's what I need to work on, here's what I want to do. But also to really receive focused feedback as opposed to have it be, here's everything and it's too much to really decide, okay, now what's my next step? And so, really what we're trying to do is tighten down on a number of things across the board. Instead of having everything this big and this deep, have it be this deep and really much more focused.
Yeah, latitude, which you already addressed, that's what I was worried about.
Who's the consultant?
Bill Rebus, yes.
Just tell me a little bit about that person.
Well, he is, has a consultancy, like his group, you would say, out of Massachusetts. And he's done a lot of research and work with teacher evaluation, best practices.
I'm sorry, I missed a name?
Bill Rebus.
Okay.
The company is Rebus Associates.
Yeah, okay, just wondering.
He's written a couple of best practice books that are so thick.
Could I make a request? Maybe starting in the October administrator reports, could we get a sense of, on the aggregate, of course, no names whatsoever, of how many of each building principal's staff they've done this with, so we can see that it's progressing, you know, over time? As a percentage of their whole? They did even say, you know, 10 of 20?
The way that the evaluation cycle works is generally in conjunction with those who are up for recertification that year. So, I mean, there will be the focus there, but each, each teacher will be evaluated. So it's not a matter of-
Everyone can expect to have this interaction, say a building principal, at least once a year?
At least twice a year.
Great.
Yep, so, and that was another reason why we really wanted to focus it down, because we wanted to make sure that those discussions were directed more around what principals can be doing specifically with this teacher, instead of just broad strokes for the entire staff.
That's wonderful. Is that something you think that we could see, you know, that, that number, once a month? I'm about halfway there, I'm three quarters of the way there? As far as that, you know, in conjunction with being compliant with that plan?
While certainly it's not something that I couldn't give you, that's really mine to chase. So, I mean, we could report to you where they are, but as far as that implementation, that's mine to hold them accountable for.
Oh, okay, so maybe in your superintendent report, you could say, we're on track, we're lagging behind, and these are the problems? Just so we know?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I have one question. How many open positions do we have right now in district?
There is one at the high school, one at Valley View, and we just had a resignation at Henry Wilson. So, I believe there's one in each building.
Okay.
And I do have a number of resignation and shift arounds to bring to you tonight.
Okay, so perfect, thank you.
Something, I lost it.
There's still a number of things on the website for Middleton as well. I look at this, no, just like their building committee is still on there, the withdrawal committee is still on there. Under subcommittees, those are still living. Okay.
Quick segue into board subcommittees.
Board subcommittees? Okay.
As we're looking at reports, there are board subcommittees that exist, although they haven't necessarily been reporting out regularly. And so, just kind of putting in the placeholder, so if there are any reports to be done, it doesn't mean that each subcommittee is expected to report monthly, but if there's anything to report, that's kind of where it would be.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yes, so.
Alright, so you just, please?
That's going to show up, so that that's where, if there's anything to report, it can be.
Yeah, one of the things we've got to do, if you do have a meeting, even if it's two people- It needs to be posted. It needs to be posted, and minutes have to be taken.
Yes, absolutely.
One of the things, and CIP, I notice if you've got that, I'm supposed to be on the CIP committee, and this is the time we should get really hot on this, because-
Absolutely.
Because this is when you formulate your budget, and we've got to coordinate with the town, what are, you know, what are our big projects that we need to do versus their big projects, so they don't, you know, clash? You know, to the tax rate.
Who is the other member of the CIP committee?
I don't know, I, we haven't met quite a while. I mean, this is, this is a time when you have to get serious.
I recall when we reorganized in March, we had said that we would, we would wait for the fall for CIP.
Yeah, I don't think we settled on two members.
Well, I'm, I've been on it in the past, I just, I'm not that I want to be on, you know, I'll do it this time, I mean, it doesn't make any difference, I'm just saying.
Or you can thumb wrestle somebody for it.
Do we need to have two members? Is the superintendent going to be involved?
I think, in the past, the superintendent has been on the CIP committee.
Oh, absolutely.
And not, well, in the past, there was not a board member that went to CIP, the superintendent had been going, so.
Are you talking about the town CIP?
Nope.
Committee or?
The school.
Well, you're-
Well, it's, it's, the CIP committee is typically the town and the school, all sitting on one board, yeah.
Because that's why you want to make sure that you have a meeting.
It's a joint committee.
So they don't, so you're, so you don't clash on the tax rate, you know, we might come up with, we may need a roof. Well, they don't know that. You're the liaison to do that.
They wouldn't know it until the budget came in.
So, so, you know, we don't have a big, you know, thick building, a community building, the same. I mean, that's, I mean, things are, some things are obvious, but, like, we, like, you say you walk through Henry Wilson, we don't know where that roof's at. I mean, we've been putting out that roof for ages, and we need, we should probably get another evaluation, seeing as we hadn't had, we don't have that much, we haven't had that much rain.
There are a number of things we probably need to have reevaluated.
But that is one that worries me.
That's kind of on my-
Radar?
Radar, yes. And there are a few that probably aren't going to take a great deal of evaluation to know that these are need-tos soon, so.
Special education procedural safeguard handbook changes.
So, you mentioned information in the packet. Back in February, they made one change to the sentence that exists, my apologies. February, the state made a very small change in terms of one sentence that's mentioned on page 11, just in terms of asking for information, and the sentence you see is represented, they are the one that they removed, and then the one that they added. So, this is just to keep you updated in terms of changes, there's been nothing else significant of note in terms of those procedures.
What business?
Do we have it? Do we have it?
Do we?
Well, I noticed, when I watched back the August 1st meeting, that I missed the SAU office committee, the space committee. It was brought up, is that committee meeting again soon, that you know?
No, not that I'm aware of, I thought that we had said that we weren't going to pursue that until we had more information from, Dr. Pfeiffer was going to go back and meet with his staff and see how they felt about it, and I don't think we ever got a report on how they felt about separating themselves or-
In parallel to going out for bid?
Right. I, I just brought it up at the last meeting, because it hasn't been brought up lately, and our lease is, is going to be up, and we need to have a plan, so.
Right, and if we are, yeah, if there were going to be an expansion of any existing buildings, we have no plans, no permits, no-
Right.
Ground broken.
Right.
So.
So is that committee working on it or not?
We are not, no.
So, is that something we need to be doing?
The committee is supposed to be working on that plan in parallel to determining, is there, is there an alternative approach?
The committee brought forward their thoughts, and the board said they wanted to see what else they could come up with.
In parallel to finding out how much it would cost to do that addition?
I don't know, did you understand it that way, Joe?
He was a lot upset about that, but I don't understand.
That's not how I understood it, I understood that he was going to go back and speak with the office to see if it was workable to separate them into the old FLA and the annex, and he was supposed to come back to us, and then we were going to move on from there.
Okay, so now we have Ruth Ellen on, can we ask that-
I can certainly have those ones. I will have that information for you when the next meeting.
Do you want to set up a meeting both, in the meantime, or wait until she has the information?
Wait until you have the information, when you have the information, let me know, and we can get together with the rest of the committee.
It will probably be on the other side of the start of school.
Yes.
I hate to be a thorn in everyone's side on this, but I don't think that the approach of wait and see is going to help us resolve the concern. The last direction that this board made a motion and voted on was for us to stop paying rent on that building come June 2017.
That is going to be a problem, because our lease goes through August, so if we stop payment in June, there will be an issue. That's-
Well, we can, I mean, we can adjust that, that's-
Okay, just-
Yeah, I thought when we looked at the lease, it ended in June.
I was told August.
Well, if we don't fund it, if we don't fund it, I believe there's an escape clause.
Could we see that lease next meeting?
I will do my best to get it for you.
And we take our direction from the votes. Well, if-
In reference to what?
Well, if, if there's an escape clause, that if it's not funded-
Right.
Then we, in other words, it's funded now until June 30th.
Yeah.
And that wasn't brought up during budget committee, I mean, budget season last season either.
Right, which is-
The escape clause, that condition was never raised until after the vote.
Right, well, but I mean, it's, it's there, I believe.
It's important that everyone has all the information.
I know we talked about it, so.
I thought I had the lease on here.
We'll make that on the next agenda.
Couple months, we'll make that list.
An actual item?
Yeah, if we could, so our next meeting is September 12th, so if we could have the SAU space committee update at September 12th, that would be great. If that committee could meet between now and then.
Well, now that's two different things, because I've been asked to meet with the SAU staff and bring that back. You want the space needs committee to meet at the same time, to do what?
Well, the last direction that the space committee was to look into the costs of the proposed addition, the layout that was brought to the board. And the board approved going out for bid on that work.
I don't remember that, that we approved going out for bid, because I would have-
And then the committee came back and said, we're going to need another year, because we need to get permits.
Well, that was Mr. Neil Johnson said that, yeah.
No.
Or Mr. Henry.
Yeah, and who's on that committee, right?
Right.
And so, that, to me, was an update from the committee.
But approvals for bids, do we have a budget line for this?
No, we don't, we don't, that's why, I don't think we-
So this committee needs to come back with a different solution then, right? That's what the committee's charged with, is coming up with a solution.
The solution the board came up with was that the superintendent was going to go and check, I'm just telling you, yeah.
We can go back in a minute minutes, because I distinctly remember that these two things were supposed to happen in parallel. Yes, you can say Dr. Pfeiffer didn't do what he was supposed to do, but the subcommittee is not doing what they're supposed to do either, just to put it blatantly.
Can you give me a parameter of the time to go back to, so I can go back to those minutes? Do you know, not asking-
Either May or June.
May or June minutes, okay.
I can look them up and bring them to everyone's attention.
I know we were brought a proposal with a map drawn out of what the issue was going to look like. We did ask to find out how much we could possibly do that, and I think we weren't sure we wanted to do that particular thing, so there were other options we were supposed to explore, but in the meantime, I think Dr. Pfeiffer was supposed to find out what his staff knows about the current plan of the expansion.
Well, I thought Larry was going to get some, some estimates.
I believe there are-
I thought, I thought that Larry was going to get some.
I know I had some estimates from, like, metal, not the metal buildings, but from, like, modulators that had come in, and I didn't do anything with them.
Do we have, do we have specific plans that were drawn, or do we have ideas that were sketched?
There were some ideas that were sketched out, and the-
Yeah, they were specific, very specific.
I mean, has it, has it gone through an architect?
No, no, no.
This is just-
And that was, that was one of the other things, was that we don't have a, we don't have funding for it, budget for it.
I do remember that conversation as well.
That was the crux of the point.
Right.
I guess I'm kind of confused about why we need to expand, if the city was in that building at one point, and, and I don't understand why it can't go back there again with, just with no changes. Are you trying to fit into the current building, which is oversized, or is that why it needs to be expanded, because you're used to being oversized? Or is it, is there a reason why we have, because we have lots of kids, and we have lots of students in the SAU, so we should be able to fit in the building?
We do have more SAU positions, though, we still have those positions.
We have the positions, and the accountability that has been placed on the SAU is much greater than when the SAU was in that building. We have more people performing those functions, but we have more that we need to be doing than when they occupied that smaller footprint. So granted, we have fewer students, it doesn't mean we have less work, or less to get accomplished. And while we do have, we have a few fewer students, granted, we have a few fewer employees, but that does not change any of the reporting that we're doing, it does not change the federal accountabilities that we have. Those pieces haven't gone away, because Middleton went away.
Well, I understand that, it's just that we, we've let go of several people in the SAU, and, and reporting and things that are digital don't really require space. So I, I guess I'm hard pressed to find out what the argument is for why we need more space.
One other concern that was raised is the privacy concerns have changed since the last time the SAU folks resided in the FLA building.
And even when we were in the former building, I mean, I was assistant superintendent, and I had three offices off of mine, and my office was a cut-through. So, I mean, certainly there are some improvements to where we are, it doesn't mean that that's where we have to stay by any means, but we do need to look at making sure that privacy is maintained, FERPA is maintained, all that good stuff as well.
And, and the files are maintained.
And files are huge, yeah.
HIPAA.
And HIPAA, and other bits of that.
That's why we moved, that's one of the reasons why we moved there. And we designed, actually, we had some halls taken out, if you remember, and put in to accommodate our situation.
But, so let's, let's go back to that committee and Ruth Ellen's, what we're asking her to do. The next meeting is not until September 12th, this month. The next meeting is not until September 12, this month. It's two weeks beyond when school starts. So, to me, it seems feasible that that committee can meet, and that you can get done what we're asking, and we can come to the 12th, September 12th meeting with sort of...
Both pieces.
Both pieces.
My concern is if there's divergence as opposed to convergence, so that, I want to make sure that if what I have to bring back is going to inform some of the pieces that the committee is doing, that they don't feel like they've gone down a road, well, if we'd known this, we might not have done this. That's all I'm concerned about.
So, can we do it on the 26th instead of the 12th?
Well, no, you, hold on, let me just jump in. But I understand what Ruth Ellen's saying, so Ruth Ellen's task, if that can happen in the earlier part of the next four weeks, then the committee can meet with you...
True.
And then we can come together. I just, I'm nervous with the 26th, because we're, I'd kind of like to see where we can go with this, because budgets, they're going to be starting to put together budgets in September anyway.
Right.
I kind of think we should, I feel like a month is enough time to...
Can you touch base with Larry, maybe, and see?
Yeah, he may have...
Is there a chairperson for that subcommittee?
No.
I would strongly recommend that that committee...
I mean, I put out all the...
To make sure it keeps moving.
Yeah.
You know?
Probably be me by default.
Well, it's Joe and I are on the committee.
Okay.
And we went and we toured the FLA, we toured the annex, we toured Little Red School House, and we toured the fifth grade wing, as all possibilities, and there was a reason why each one of them wouldn't work, so...
I will say that I am somewhat loath to give up program space, academic program space for offices at this juncture, because we now have some prime opportunities to expand some programs that we haven't had. And if it comes down to my space being smaller so that kids can have the program space, it's going to go to the kids.
Yes, the fifth grade wing was quickly...
I think you'll find there's small offices speckled all around this campus. That lock, that you can, you put a locking file cabinet and be all your needs.
I think, if I can nutshell it, I think you're going to find that the majority of this board, anyway, I think the majority of this board wants the SAU relocated to campus. Now, I know we're going to get a lot of alternative opinions of why that building is the best place to be, and it may be the best place to be for the tasks that are required or whatever. I think we need to look at the best place to be on campus. And I think that's what this board has said they want.
Yeah, they said...
Maybe all of us.
I think it was, I think it was all of us, yeah.
Pretty much, yes, so...
It was just a matter of what...
Where and how, and yeah.
And the logistics of it.
Best bang for the buck.
Okay.
To be functional.
Other than old business?
I think, I think we ought to start something on this Little Red School House. We need to get that out of our hair.
The variance.
Well, the variances...
I did receive an email back late today from Dennis, and basically, he said, because it was under six feet, and it was within the line, and faces the right way, no variance was needed, and it was fine.
Okay.
But, we need to get, we got a conflict with that property behind us, the Ferber property. And we need to get that, that's a problem. We need to get that squared away, either, you know, we tried to sell it one other time, but with the cloud over the title, that's going to be a problem, because you're, they almost got to be combined. Somebody's, you know, because they've been traveling over that, and they don't have adverse possession. Matter of fact, he was here when that happened, when Phillips gave the opinion that they can't take things by adverse possession, so... But we need to, we need to get that straightened out, either we buy the property in behind, which, for reasons I don't want to mention in public, we have a problem as far as access to the buildings, these, you know, these buildings, this, our campus.
Okay. I'm glad you had, I had variance down, so I'm glad you found out about that. Any other old business? Public participation, back to that. Anybody? Not a big crowd out there? Okay. Heyday is this weekend, Mr. Petrie wanted us to mention that, so...
Well, I just, you know, it's a town event.
Big event? Friday and Saturday, correct?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And Sunday.
The big...
I'm sure you can go on the REC website to see all the festivities.
For anyone who's interested, you can find me in the Dunk Tank on Saturday, 2:00 to 3:00 p.m.
I used to be a pitcher, I got to get you...
Come on. I don't want to just sit there, I'd love to get dunked over and over.
Go early, because the water gets murky earlier on day.
Oh, 2:00 to 3:00.
Okay, our next meeting will be September 12th, due to the Labor Day holiday. September 12th, and actually, you mentioned the 26th, can we also do the 19th, do it just two weeks back to back like we did with our July meetings?
That way, it keeps it closer to the 3rd.
Instead of 26th?
Instead, yeah.
Do, just keep them...
So, 12 and 19.
12 and 19. Thank you, for those of you that viewed in from home, hope you enjoy the rest of your summer, what's left of it. I want to take a motion to go into non-public.
Sure.
So, moved by Mr. Petrie under RSA 91A colon 3, two, A, B, and C resignations, nominations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Frida, are all those in favor, roll. Mr. Frida?
Yes.
Mr. Cardinal?
Yes.
Mr. Petrie?
Yes.
Mrs. Moran?
Yes.
And I'm E.S.
How many first days? Cool.